Please join us.
Heavenly Father, guide our hearts and our minds in spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech tonight. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all that we do here today is for the glory of you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Planning Commission meeting for October 14th, 2021 is now called to order. We encourage you to wear masks while indoors and observe the six-foot distancing. The hearing room is set up to allow a maximum of 32 people. Please respect that limit and do not add chairs. The lobby and outdoors are overflow areas. The meeting is broadcast on the big screen in the lobby. Once you have spoken, please exit the room while others can sit while they wait their turn to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Address the comments to the Planning Commission, not the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone has signed up, has spoken. When your name is called, please come to the podium. We understand that we have strong feelings in one way or another. Out of courtesy and unless it's your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. Hearing, sorry. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If the previous speaker has stated the points you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing can proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up at the table in the back of the room. Names will be called in the order you sign up on the sheet. Mr. Starter, please call the roll.
Raymick?
Here.
Janet?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Gerke?
Here.
Phil Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Hobbie?
Present. May I have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. These items placed in this section are applications which have demonstrated the compliance and applicable city requirements. Pardon me. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission and/or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners desire individually, individual items may be discussed, voted upon, and separated matter of business. May I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with the staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Director Selman, will you read the item on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item number one is the item that is on tonight's consent agenda. This is site plan approval, SPA 21138, excuse me. Large-scale development review for a four-story addition on the Tye Me Resort and Spa located at 328 Central Avenue. The recommendation is for approval with seven conditions for construction of a four-story addition on this existing structure because with the conditions it demonstrates compliance with applicable Hot Springs codes. I'll read the conditions into the record. Number one, the development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to City of Hot Springs Historic District Commission Certificate of Appropriateness approval, height of building, and utilities. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, all exterior lighting shall be fully shielded, downcast, and retain light within the property. Number four, no signs are being reviewed or approved as part of this application as Central Avenue Historic District signs require Historic District Commission approval. Number five, separate permit application shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department, and permits shall be in hand for any stormwater, drainage, and sidewalk repairs prior to beginning any work, as may be required. Number six, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the site plan and with the conditions of this approval. Number seven, sidewalk and right-of-way occupation during construction requires specific mitigation measures subject to approval and permits by the City of Hot Springs and Arkansas Department of Transportation. That concludes the conditions for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director Selman. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Oh, pardon? It's consent. It's consent. Commissioner Brown?
No, I'm sorry, no one is. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is new business. There will be opportunity, there will be opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Selman, would you introduce the next item, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number two is preliminary subdivision, PS 21137, Cornerstone Development Subdivision, review of four lots and a future phase located at approximately 150 Cornerstone Lane.
May I have a motion to, I'm sorry, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the particular item. May I have a motion to approve item two?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number two?
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant, James Montgomery with BNF Engineering Incorporated, is representing property owners Garrett Enterprises Incorporated, and he seeks preliminary subdivision plat and site improvement development plan approval for a new subdivision to be known as Cornerstone Subdivision. The subject property is generally located east-southeast of the Cornerstone Shopping Center, which is on the southeast corner of Central Avenue and Paca Street. It has an approximate address of 150 Cornerstone Lane. The subject land contains zoning classifications of R2, suburban residential district, C2, general business district, and M2, heavy manufacturing district, and contains future land use map designations of residential low, commercial enclave, and industrial. Property is located in Board of Directors District Number Five. This is approximately 34 acres of partially developed land. There are two commercial structures, a large industrial building, paved parking areas, paved private street, service road, utilities, landscaping, and streetlights. The subject land is landlocked to the east, south, and west with access to Thornhill Street, which is undeveloped, and that would be Thornhill Street extended to the north. It takes access to Central Avenue and Paca Street by recorded easement. An existing service road traverses the subject property from its eastern boundary with land now owned by Ranifer LLC. The service road connects physically across Ranifer Land to join Camino del Rey, a public right-of-way owned and maintained by the city. While providing an apparent way to travel from cornerstone land to Camino del Rey, the applicant provided no documentation that the Ranifer Land portion is dedicated to the public. The four proposed lots are located on the C2, general business district, and M2, heavy manufacturing district, zoned areas within the property. Proposed lots one to three would establish lot lines around existing structures and their associated improvements, while proposed lot four would be vacant. Approximately 14 acres of undeveloped land designated as future residential appear as Block Two, Phase Two. Approval of the preliminary plat shall be conditioned upon the applicant amending the bill of assurance to resolve numerous comments that came from the Development Review Committee. Hot Springs Code Section 16446 lists the submission requirements for preliminary plats and associated development plans. The applicant's resubmital, along with the recommended conditions of approval, substantially satisfy the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16442. Conditions of approval provide assurance that if construction is accomplished in accordance with approved site improvement and development plans, all applicable technical codes and specifications, and if all criteria of approval are met, the developer may apply for final plat consideration without delay. The finding is that Hot Springs Code 16446 lists all the submission requirements for preliminary plats and associated development plans. The submittal, along with the conditions, substantially satisfy the code requirements. This application also seeks to defer installation of the interior sidewalk for Lot Four until the time of its development. Hot Springs Code Section 16476H allows for this deferral so long as provision for required sidewalk construction is included in the subdivision bill of assurance. The recommendation is that Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat and development plan for Cornerstone subdivision with the following conditions and grant the deferring of the installation of sidewalk on Lot Four until the time of its development because the submittal substantially demonstrates compliance with Hot Springs Code 16446. There are 20 conditions, and I'm going to read them into the record, so fasten your seatbelts. All construction and construction activities are to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and site improvement and development plans. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, a final subdivision bill of assurance containing the modifications identified in the staff report as 1 through 13 shall be provided to and approved by the planning department prior to execution of the subdivision final plat. A copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the planning department after recordation. Number three, acceptable evidence of dedicated public right-of-way connecting the service road to the existing public right-of-way of Camino del Rey must be provided. Four, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations, including a retention and detention plan if required. Five, the final plat shall identify lots one to four as being within Block One. Six, the preliminary plat signature block should be corrected to reflect preliminary plat and not lot split approval. Number seven, the plat shall reflect the required 50-foot building setback requirement from all property lines on properties zoned M2, heavy manufacturing district. Number eight, the final plat and final bill of assurance shall include a statement that streets and service road slash emergency access are private and not under the care and custody of the city or county and will therefore not be maintained by the city or county. Nine, all street repairs shall be rectangular, not circular, and shall be in at least half-street width, which is a full lane width increment. Ten, add a streetlight at the westernmost entrance island if not already present. Eleven, street name, Cornerstone Court, has to be approved by the City Board of Directors to be official and to be added to the city's street index per Hot Springs Code Section 1225. Excuse me. Street acceptance has to be petitioned to the City Board of Directors for ratification of city acceptance for maintenance per Hot Springs Code 151013. Thirteen, Cornerstone Lane's street index description will need to be modified as it is currently described as being from Cornerstone Boulevard to the city limits. If the intent is to change the street name or to add Cornerstone Court, the street names will have to change at the 90-degree curve of the road. Fourteen, any new commercial development requiring a building permit within the subdivision is responsible for the installation of sidewalks per Hot Springs Code 15101.7. Fifteen, stormwater detention or retention is required for subdivision per Hot Springs Code 15131.7 subsection three. Sixteen, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat with necessary changes made to the plat and the site improvement and development plans, and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Seventeen, no new construction permits will be issued, and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code 16444 has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk, and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the planning department office. Eighteen, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until October 14th, 2023. Within 15 days prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year for project completion. Nineteen, the applicant may defer the installation of sidewalk along Lot Four frontage until the time of development per Hot Springs Code Section 16476H. And twenty, deferring sidewalk installation along Lot Four frontage shall be addressed in the subdivision's final bill of assurance. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Selman. The Planning Committee, sorry. Will the applicant now come forward? State your name and your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is James Montgomery, 101 Whispering Hills, Hot Springs, 71901. The project that we're describing here is a, you know, obviously, a lot of that's existed out there, but the purpose of this exercise we're going through here is so they can sell Lot Two. There's a piece of property out there. They'd already done a lot split, so therefore, they had that. They could not do another lot split without going forward with a formal subdivision. I've worked out there on that project, you know, the cornerstone since 1995, and so, you know, yes, Kathy's right as far as, you know, is there no public access, I guess, from the west, but there is an easement to the public. That's the way that everyone out there is served, is through that easement to the public. The road that goes through there from the east to the west, Kathy's asking for to get that easement recorded. There is an easement that does exist but was not recorded between the Lambert Rainbow folks that developed that subdivision there, Carmar del Rey. And it's, of course, the pavement, I guess, the chip seal is broke up, and yes, the client, it will adhere to all the conditions she's put forth there, and they do plan to bond it in order to make a 1231 closing on Lot Two. So, is there any other questions?
Thank you. We will now call those who have signed up to speak on this application. We have Judy Ellis. Before you speak, in order to allow time for any interesting people to be able to speak, each person has a maximum of three minutes. Please address your comments directly to the commissioners and not the audience. Members of the commission can speak, ask questions during this course of this process. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Judy Ellis, and I live at 209 Marwan Net Place, which is in the Broadmore subdivision that is right up against the back of the, I think it's Block Two residential of the subdivision they're wanting to do. And we just have, I'm speaking for several of the people in our subdivision, and I just had a few questions, actually, to clarify. We're concerned about the buffer zone that will be between our subdivision and the residential subdivision that they're proposing to do at the Cornerstone. We don't know how many feet we will have as the buffer zone and where it will start. And we're also concerned because some of our yards that are against this property is like, it's kind of a ravine. Our yards are down here, and they're up here for part of their lots, and if they're going to kind of, their lots come down like this, are they going to fill up, and we're going to be way down here, and they're going to be up there. What's going to happen? Is stuff going to dump on us or collapse? We're just concerned about, you know, how they're going to do this. And, y'all answered a lot of my questions, so I'm not going to try to go through some of that. Y'all had someone had also mentioned the Thornhill Road going through. That was a road dedicated from the original developer of Broadmore to be used for that subdivision to come in and out, and only for that subdivision. And our subdivision and the patio homes down from us would like to keep that closed, if at all possible, because we really do not want the extra added traffic from a commercial properties and stuff coming through where we are. And on their, on the bill of assurance, number 13 refers to lots one and six setbacks that are in the plat. I couldn't find them on the plat, and someone had said, well, they are the ones that are up against, you know, y'all's properties down at the, in closest to where Lowe's is. And I wasn't really for sure if I was even going to the right places to look, and we would like some direction. But I think mainly when it comes down to it, the people in my area are concerned about the buffer zone. Are we going to have this, the subdivision that they want to do for residential backs up to ours? Is that going to be 200 feet for their homes, and then a 40-foot road for them, and then a buffer for them, so they're not looking at a commercial sub, you know, at a commercial subdivision, and then the opening of possibly the Thornhill little excess there. But it's closed now, and it's never been open for use. And I guess that's really it.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, are there any of the, can you answer any of the? Director Selman, are there any of the, can you answer any of that, or should we ask the applicant?
Those really are questions for the applicant. Why don't you have all of your speakers?
Yes, ma'am.
Are questions for who?
We're going to ask the applicant if he would like to come back up and maybe-
Okay, I thought it was another meeting I had to go to. Let me get these meetings down here. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We're just kind of, really didn't know what all was going on, and just wanted some clarification besides hearsay and what say. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so very much. Would the applicant like to address the questions from the audience?
I'll do my very best, ma'am. Again, the purpose of this exercise today is so we can sell Lot Two. Now, here's what everyone needs to understand, nothing goes on out there without the city approving whatever happens. So I think that's, you know, if I was the general public, I would take a, that's, that's, that would give me great comfort, because I can tell you Kathy and Rick, they work, they will work with you, but they are by the book, and that's good for the residents of Hot Springs. And so, yes, there's, at this time, all I'm aware of with the client is Lot Two is being sold. Yes, Lot Four may be sold at some point, but as Kathy stated, it will have to come back and seek approval and address those, some conditions with that.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, sir.
Can you address the buffer zone and the Thornhill question? Thornhill Street that, that ends there at the buffer zone?
Well, again, I think I'm going to throw that back to, I mean, you know, we can come before you with something, but, you know, I, you know, I don't think, I think the Garretts would want to be a good neighbor, but again, some of this will come down to what's approved here. I mean, you, you've seen it time and time again, you know, that you're going to be looking out for, you know, the folks out, the public, and I don't, I can't, you know, I'm not answering you directly, I'm doing my very best to answer that, but again, I know we're going to have some, you know, the grading issues will be something that'll have to be accounted for, so, you know, and I know that group over there, they're, they're strong, and they're going to stay involved, so the, whoever Gilbert does, you know, he's going to have to satisfy them. And I think that's what you guys have always worked to do, is to find common ground.
Well, I'm sure the stormwater and runoff issue will be addressed, so I don't think they have anything to worry about, about this development flooding their subdivision, Broadmoor subdivision.
Right. And as far as Thornhill goes, I think, you know, you've already kind of through the years there with the church, you saw how that went, so I would imagine that that's probably set for how it's going to go forward, and I don't, again, this is James Montgomery, this is not Gil or Garrett talking, but I cannot see them, foresee them using that road there.
That's my question, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Director Selman.
Thank you. I think, does anybody have any other questions for our applicant here? Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we'll open it up for discussion amongst our commissioners here.
Do we have any more?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My question to you, Kathy. In my experience here, I've seen questions like the buffer zone and possible retaining walls and things addressed in the final site plan when they come back, not in the preliminary.
Right.
Am I correct in that?
You, you are, as far as that goes. This is a very peculiar subdivision. It's neither residential, nor commercial, nor industrial exclusively. And, and I don't believe that in the time that I've been here, which is fifteen years, that we've ever seen a subdivision quite like this. The part of the subdivision that abuts Ms. Ellis's neighborhood is zoned residential, and as such, there would be no requirement for a buffer. However, that part of the subdivision is Phase Two, and we don't have development plans for Phase Two at this time, only Phase One. At the time that Phase Two would go forward for some type of development, then detailed development plans, including grading, drainage, utilities, connection of any roads and so forth, that's when those would be reviewed, and they will be reviewed with a fine-toothed comb. As to Thornhill Street, Thornhill Street is not in this subdivision, so there's no anticipated improvement of Thornhill Street connected with this action whatsoever. So that, I, that's, that's all I can tell you about that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion points?
Well, any, any improvements on the property are going to have to come back before the Planning Commission.
Correct.
So, this is just allowing them to be able to sell the property, which has been sitting there for eternity.
Been a while.
Lot Two.
Okay, so commissioners, if you don't have any other questions, we'll go around the table, just to finalize that. Commissioner Walker, any other questions?
No questions.
Mr. Janet?
No, I really don't.
Commissioner Stafford?
No, no questions.
Commissioner White, everything get answered for you, sir?
Everything was answered.
Great. Wonderful. Commissioner Remick?
I'm good.
Commissioner Jackson Goldsmith?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirke?
Good.
Absolutely. At this time, I have, can I have a motion to approve item two?
We have the motion.
We have the motion.
Okay, thank you.
You need a roll call.
Sorry. Mr. Stafford, will you please call the roll?
Stafford?
Approved.
Kirke?
Approved.
Goldsmith?
Approved.
White?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Ramey?
Approved.
Janet?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you.
The, uh, item is approved, and, um, the action of Planning Commission is, is final unless appealed to the Board of Directors within thirty days.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. The next item on the agenda is the director's report. Director Selman?
I'm sure there was something I was supposed to talk about. Oh, short-term rental?
Yeah, the, the elimination of conditional use-
Yes.
For short-term rental potential?
Yes. Good news and bad news, depending on if you are planning commissioners who are also on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The short-term rental ordinance was passed Tuesday evening by the Board of Directors, and any new short-term rental, that is, a short-term rental that does not currently have a valid license, will be required to obtain what the Board is calling a special use approval. At one point, the Board was going to require conditional use approval, and you all know what those are, and they have decided not to do that. So it will be an administrative approval, but appealable to the BZA. So, those of you who are on BZA, and there are at least two, that you will be seeing any appeals that come forward on those licenses. So, a project that we haven't had in the past is definitely taking a lot of time, and the Board wants to make sure that short-term rentals in Hot Springs are safe, that we preserve the housing stock that we have available for our essential employees, and that we continue to be a place where people want to come and spend time and money and live and thrive. So, that's where we are.
Director Selman, would it be appropriate for me to ask you a question regarding the BZA at this time?
Um, I don't know why not.
Are we, as the BZA BAIA, are we limited to two Planning Commissioners?
Three.
Limited, we can't, we can't have three?
We must have three, and it's my understanding that the Board will be approving a third Planning Commission member to join BZA, Lori Grimm.
Lori Grimm?
Mm-hmm.
Lori Erickson?
Yes, who is also Lori Grimm, yes. Apparently.
Well, I think this is a, a good item to bring up, and, you know, I've seen flash parties out, the pop-up parties, that there would be four to five hundred people that would invade a neighborhood and leave trash and park in people's yards and driveways, and so I think that the city needs to be able to control that a little bit better.
How are you going to stop that from happening?
Give the city some teeth to make arrests.
Yep.
Can't they make arrests now?
Not, no. If, if a car's parked on private property, the city can't, the city police department can't do anything about it.
Really?
You have to have a tow on your own property owner, has to have a tow.
We had this, we had that happen on Derby Day. Nothing against Oak Lawn, but we had that happen on Derby Day where the house next door had fifteen cars, and they were blocking our driveway.
I didn't know the police couldn't tow.
This one had hundreds of cars.
Yeah.
And even had cars parked at the shopping center and had Uber drivers, I think, Uber, 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 whatever it is, with vans to take them to the house for the party.
There's good and bad sides. I agree, the city needs to have some opportunity to make the, the best decision.
I think that's, new ordinance will give the city some teeth, give them some recourse.
Well, from what I'm saying, all parties have to end by, by midnight, and, you know, you can, a three-bedroom can have up to eight people in the house, and that would, that would be it, so then the police can come in and ask them to leave.
I mean, as a community, these are great problems to have, because it's bringing more people to our area.
It is.
And we have to love that.
That's great problems to have to address.
And it's growing faster than sometimes we are there to, you know, put all the rules and regulations together, so I'm glad everybody's invested in it.
Will your, your department inspect the properties?
Uh, there will be a requirement for an inspection to be done by a licensed home inspector. So that will be arranged on the private side. But the state does license home inspectors, and they have very strong standards as well as ethical requirements, so rather than hire a fleet of inspectors-
That's what I was expecting.
Yeah, no. And, and it provides employment opportunities on the private side, so that seems to be a, a way that we can try and see if it's going to work. And, I mean, let's face it, we are, we are learning as we go here. This is not something we've done before, and what we do three years from now may not resemble what we're doing now, but for now, we have a path forward, and the Board is very comfortable with what they put together, so we'll see what happens.
Director Selman, with regard to the license itself, and what was approved, does that transfer with the seller?
No.
Ah, good.
No, it does not.
It's by property, is it not? Yeah.
Because that's, it's being used in some cases as a selling point for a property.
Right, they, they are-
To say, this has a license to be, and that needs to, well, hopefully that'll go through a different process.
Right. The license can transfer, but it doesn't have to transfer. So, it, it requires the new owner to make application-
Oh, okay.
-to have it.
Okay.
You know, the problem with, with the private inspectors is they're so behind now, we don't have enough home inspectors in Hot Springs, and the real estate contract, state law, is they have ten days after the signing of the contract to have the house inspected and respond to the seller. So that's going to create a problem there, I think.
Yeah, it really will. Yeah, you're right.
You just have to promote more.
Maybe Hillary will get her licenses and specter.
She can do just about anything. Again, good problem for our community, such as ours, to have.
It just caught us off guard. Nobody expected it to explode like this.
And it did explode.
Really, that, that's, that's the truth, of course, because we really think of the lake as being the tourist part of the town, and it's not necessarily the same anymore. And it's great.
Especially with you guys opening up the season to six months, and, you know, the, the improvements that Oak Lawn's made-
That means the whole city that's doing it.
I mean, the entire city, you know, is growing and booming, and this was a cottage industry that we thought was going to be small, and it exploded on us.
Yeah.
Well, in a lot of towns.
Yeah.
Their companies-
And what I've found through this, it's, it's these little pockets of greatness that are the ones that are growing the fastest.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we have to take lessons from Bryanston, it happened there.
Mm-hmm.
And-
Asheville, I mean, yeah. There's so many-
And Eureka Springs, does anybody know?
I mean, they're a little bit ahead of us, just on the, some of that stuff, just because I, I think vacation was like their only source of bringing people in, where we have other things here too, though.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Miss Selman.
That's it.
I had a question. Is that, is that a special use permit, something that can be revoked, like if you violate-
It can.
Okay. So that's, I mean, I think what you were talking about, that people having parties-
Yep.
You can disincent, I mean, you can arrest the people who are throwing the party, but they're just the Airbnb-er, whereas if you can incentivize the host to discourage people from throwing parties there.
The owner, the owner, not likely to be there.
They're, they're going to have to be a bit more strategic in who they rent to.
Right, and I think if you can encourage, I mean, I think it's a good step to have that encourageable by something that can be taken away from you if you rent, yeah.
Well, in this particular situation, the police did contact the owner, out-of-town owner, and, you know, told them the, of what could happen if it happened again, so.
Does the ordinance include a provision that there has to be an RP within a certain amount of time?
Yeah, sixty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that?
A, a responsible party-
Oh, okay.
Who, who will respond to a complaint about something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kathy, I want to ask you a question. Did the people on last month's, I forget the street-
Melbourne?
Did they, no?
No, I was talking about Byd Lendley Park?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's been appealed.
Did they file suit? Again?
It's been appealed. Yeah, we had two appeals on that project, and, and it will be heard by the Board on November second. That was actually my report. It has been appealed.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been appealed again.
It's been appealed again.
On what grounds, do you know? Or do you know?
I can't talk about it, because it's a conditional use. Cone of silence. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments? Questions, concerns?
Madam Chairman, I make motion that we adjourn for the-
I second that motion.
All right. I'm going to sit here forever.
Where is that down?
I hit it.